I call this Village of Green Hills Council Meeting to order for May 24, 2022. Clerk call roll.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Metz?
Here.
Holter?
Here.
Ospinoglu?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Me and I'm here. Okay, we have a moment of silence with our prayer by Maria Walther.
Dear God, we, as we approach Memorial Day, may we honor and remember those who died that we might live in freedom. We remember our departed loved ones and gone on before us. Those that we honor will be a part of our lives forever. And may God grant us to be free, the home of the brave and the land of the free forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have minutes of the previous council meeting of April 26, 2022. There are no corrections to the minutes. Minutes will stand approved. Hearing none, minutes approved. Okay, we have a public presentation, Citizens Appreciation Award from the Green Hills Police Department presented to Catherine, what's her name? How do you pronounce that name?
DeSerris.
All right.
Mayor and our manager, would you care to join me up here?
Sure.
The young lady before you here is quite exceptional. She most likely saved some lives, and we wanted to tell you a little bit about the story. This occurred back on May 6, and our officers, one of which is here, Officer Holbrooke, responded to Wynton in Cromwell regarding this silver vehicle that was driving south in the northbound lanes of Wynton Road. This was at 1:40 in the afternoon, full afternoon traffic, and this was actually in the separated lanes. You can imagine how dangerous this situation could have been. When the officer arrived, he spoke to one of our residents who was elderly and very, very confused, didn't know where she was. She was looking for South Wynton Road, and she was trying to get home here. She was somewhat argumentative with the officer and did not want to follow his instructions. This was Officer Moore writing. He said there was a female present, who was Catherine, who was speaking with the other driver, and she had taken a liking to Catherine. She then, Officer, asked her really to go above and beyond the call of duty and ask if she would speak with her and convince her to allow her to follow us. It was agreed upon then that she, the woman did not agree on the police giving her a ride home, but she did say that Catherine could give her a ride. So we asked Catherine if that would be okay, and she said yes, she would do that. So then we took, we followed all of that and brought Catherine back to her car. But the real story here is that Catherine observed this woman some distance from here pulling into her work location the wrong way, and this was at Kids Are Kids at Fairfield. So she asked, she asked the woman if everything was okay. She stated she was lost and trying to get back home. She provided Catherine with the location that she was trying to get to, and she then offered to lead her to that location using her GPS. So she'd already built that rapport, so that allowed us to get her safely home to the I section here in Green Hills. But I'm here to tell you that without this young lady's assistance, this could have been a serious traffic accident resulting in a fatality to the elderly driver or to someone else. So we've unfortunately had to order the other driver for reexamination. It's probably time for her to think about that. But the fact that this young lady, I think at 20 years of age, had the presence of mind to do all she did, she's quite a hero in my eye. So as a result of that, the three of us, the mayor, the manager, and I consulted, and we have determined that Catherine DeSerris is to be awarded the Citizen Appreciation Award. And it reads as follows, "On a busy Friday afternoon of May 6, 2022, you called the Green Hills Police Department to report a motorist driving in an unsafe manner. At one point, in fact, the motorist was driving south in the northbound lane of Wynton Road. You had earlier encountered her in Fairfield when she seemed confused. You offered to use your phone's mapping software to lead the motorist to her home here in Green Hills. Unfortunately, her driver driving became you the moron addict which led to your call. Two Green Hills police officers, Andrew Moore and Carl Holbrooke, were able to get the motorist stopped while her vehicle was facing the wrong way on Wynton Road. When she provided the officers with her address, she became argumentative and wanted to continue in a direction which would not have taken her to her residence. Since you had experienced a good rapport with her, the officers asked if you would drive the motorist's car the short distance to her home, and you readily agreed. The officers ensured her safety once she arrived home and transported you back to your vehicle. Your quick reporting of this driving behavior allowed us to rapidly intercede without danger to others. Your quick actions undoubtedly saved lives, and your willingness to assist led to a peaceful resolution to the incident. The men and women of the Green Hills Police Department and the officials of our community are grateful for and appreciate your contributions to the department and to our community. We are honored to acknowledge your accomplishment, certify our appreciation, and wish you well in your future endeavors. In recognition thereof, we have caused our signature seal and the badge of the Green Hills Police Department to be affixed on this 24th day of May in the year of our Lord 2022, and is signed by me as the Chief of Police, by Ms. Kovak as our Municipal Manager, and by Mayor Moore. Catherine, congratulations."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you. She'd want to go into police work maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. We have no public hearings. Reports of municipal officials, Municipal Manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad I get to speak first so I can be the first one to compliment our police department for the excellent job they did at the open house this past weekend. And I know we had a ton of very dedicated citizens who helped. It was just an awesome, I can't say enough good stuff about it, that performance. So good job on that one. And I better start with the legislative report. We have two items for council's approval tonight. One is the first piece of legislation, first of two, that council will have to pass regarding the general operating levy that we have coming up this fall, this November. This is the initial one that allows the Finance Director to ask the auditor to give us the revenue projections for the anticipated levy. It's a renewal. We've had some of these levies since like the 1970s. They're on a five-year cycle, and this is a 3.89 mil levy, and right now that generates about $188,000 for us annually. So it's a pretty significant one for us. The next piece of legislation that we have is a supplemental on the appropriation, and in this case, we are adding donated money into the police donation fund so they can spend it when there's a worthy cause. Then for regular items to report on, I know I had to give the whole community really sad news about the pool. It came up over the weekend, was noticed up there. It's actually like a piece of metal that was flying around into the pump, into the filter, and it just, it went through with such force, it like went into the side of the filter. You have a picture of this if you want to see it because I'm probably not describing it well. But there's nothing they can do. They can't run the pump. They can't get that piece out of the filter without totally destroying the filter. It is destroyed. So we are in a position, SwimSafe has been working on this practically around the clock to find the right size filter. These are rather large items, really large items. And then the pump will have to be, when they do find a pump, probably, I'm going to use the word fabricated, could be the wrong word, but it will need to be able to pump the gallons per minute that we require. Supply chain issues are factoring in here as well. Can't just go to the store and buy what we need. We have to try to come up with something. At this point, they're estimating a week, but we really don't know. I had hoped to have a little bit more of an update for you this evening, but that's, that's all I have at this point in time. And we've informed the public as well about the delay. Every time I get an update, I will put that out so everybody's aware of what's going on. That was just so upsetting. I mean, I don't know about everybody else, but I really look forward to knowing that that pool is open. It just signals that warm summer days are here.
You'll extend, we're extending the preseason rate?
Yes, preseason rate will be extended through whenever that new opening date is. And then I think as we go forward, we'll find out, you know, once we know what the cost of this is, if there's any ability to extend the season or, you know, somehow do something to make up for this. But it's kind of down the road till we have a lot of, a lot of our costs and time factor.
But the water is a pretty shade of green.
Well, it's gone now.
Oh, yeah.
They were concerned that by the time we get a pump, it would be so bad that it was going to be easier on the pump to just start fresh. So that's what we'll do. But yeah, it didn't take long, did it?
Maybe we'll have to turn the sprinklers on on the golf course.
I know.
Some people can go down there and run through the sprinkler.
Yeah. Another summer project is going to be resurfacing the lot behind, behind the shopping center. And I do just want to talk a little bit on timing for that. Again, pool, pool parking, we'll put that down behind the loaves when it, when it occurs. It shouldn't be through the entire construction, but at certain points, you know, we'll have to kind of shift it around a little bit, but when they do finally pave. And again, we, we pretty much have to move forward first to be sure we spend the money in a timely manner. Second, though, there are really serious issues with the contractors right now in bidding projects out very far at all. So we're likely to not get any bids. If we push off our deadline to like September, October, and nobody's going to want to bid on it. So we're kind of stuck moving forward, but we, I think we can accommodate the parking with the least amount of inconvenience to people. Let's see, we did, yeah, the Wynton, Wynton Road speed issues. We are working on some issues there, getting some additional signage. We will, you know, randomly be placing the speed sign out on Wynton Road to attract attention to that. We're also working on getting some guardrail for along there, proper, the proper type of guardrail and the proper placement. So you will see that materializing as the summer moves forward. And already talked about the pool. And I, yes?
Was that the slide? Was that?
Oh, it was repainted. It's ready to go. That'll be fun when it opens up. Looks really good. Yeah, the last thing I wanted to mention is our tax budget, and Deb will probably touch on this a little bit, but we would have our, it'll be available for public review June 10. And we are scheduling a public hearing for our work session meeting on June 14 with, then you will have until your July meeting to, it would be the work session meeting in July to pass it so it can then get down to the county on their deadline of July 20, I believe. So I also have two items that I'll be forwarding for Law Committee review. We want to put a cyber policy in place and take a look at public nuisance properties, some good legislation for that to help us with those issues.
We have the meeting on the 28th June.
Right, so I'll get that for you.
I have a couple of questions, Yvonne Mae. Is this appropriate time?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. When you mentioned that perhaps we would extend the swimming time, we always did a little bit, a few days, weekend into Labor Day. Does that mean that that's still on, or is that part of the extension that we're talking about?
That isn't on right now.
Okay.
And we did do that through the two years of COVID.
Yes, correct.
So it's been a long bit since we did it.
Correct.
My hesitancy right now is just not knowing what this issue's going to cost us.
Yeah.
Because there will be a cost. It's not just a matter of, well, we'll just move this week down, that week. We've already hired, you know, SwimSafe has already hired a full staff. Some will be down there working on these issues, things like that. So I think maybe partway into the year, we can see
Okay.
where we are financially, if we can extend it. But I think that would be really nice if we could do that.
Okay. And what is the estimate time for the pump, the filter? I mean, if you, anybody has a guess?
Right. He guessed about a week, but that was a guess. So as soon as I hear anything at all, I will let you know.
Okay. I have another weird remark, and it has been bouncing in my head, and it has to come out somehow. I was just thinking that when we did this, and it was in the extreme situation with COVID, and we did all of this in here, and we, I'm looking at the entrances from here, if there might be in case of a need, a way to put a ramp in case that someone is on a walker, or someone is on crutches, or something like that. Because there's a step in there, we come to the elevator or whatever. If one of us need to hop along here, has anybody thought about an ADA accessibility for up here for the table, or do we have to automatically say we are out for three months, or what?
You know, I would think that we could probably fairly easy find a small ramp that we could push up to the step
Okay.
for somebody to have that accessibility.
I just, you know, summer comes in, people running, bicycles, falling out of bicycles, whatever. And I just, an abundance of caution, I just suddenly dawned on me, it just kind of like, I kept on thinking, hip replacement, knee replacement, you know, things like that. So
Okay, yeah, I'll look into that. I would think that's something that might
Mine could make something in an hour.
At the time, we were just not thinking about that. So just extremely in a hurry to prepare this and to make it as clean as possible. All right. And then, no, that's it for me. I'll be quiet now.
Okay. All right. Nothing else. Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item tonight. I wanted to mention, bring to your attention House Bill 563. That's, it's actually passed out of a committee in the House, but it hasn't come to a full House vote yet. I bring it up because, not that it's so much of an issue here in Green Hills, but I bring it up for a lot of the reason I bring up most things here. House Bill 563 would essentially prohibit local governments, you know, municipalities, townships from regulating what they call short-term rentals, but what most people kind of know as like Airbnbs or VBRO-type operations. I only bring it up because it's been met with some resistance, obviously, because whether you, however you feel about Airbnbs or short-term rentals, it's just, it's met some resistance because it's the state taking away local authority to regulate things within your own, what would probably be a zoning regulation or a business regulation. So we're going to keep an eye on that. You know, some municipalities already have regulations on their books for short-term rentals, and the way this bill is written, it would basically override that, would wipe that out. So we'll continue to watch it and let you know how it progresses.
There's additional legislation that's being considered relative to eliminating the protective liability for police, fire, first responders. Has there been any?
I will look. I mean, that, that concept comes up from time to time in various bills, and it never seems to get all the way through. But we'll take a look and see if there's anything pending in that capacity right now.
All right. Thanks. Clerk of Council Teresa LaHolly.
Yes, tonight.
Chief of Police Neil Furtman.
Thanks, Mayor. A few minutes into our open house this past Saturday, I turned to my boss and I said, if no more than 10 people show, I'm resigning immediately today. So I'm here. We, we had, we estimate about 125 people actually come through our building. It was probably, the mayor confirmed it's the first time we've done an open house. Fire Department joined with us. We opened up all three floors of this building, which maybe not even all of you have seen. But it was kind of interesting to have folks go down to the property and evidence room and down into the basement area. But I think that it was very well received. We got lots of really nice comments from folks that went through. We had a lot of families that, that actually came. So a lot of kids crawling through cruisers and onto fire trucks. So it was, it was great to see, and we're glad that the community was so receptive to, to turning out. We also had an event last month, which was our Coffee with the Cop. We try and do that at least once a year. Of course, COVID slowed us down. We had a pretty good turnout with that. Fire Department even joined us on that event as well, and a lot of good discussions, and we gave away a lot of door prizes at both events. Recently, more recently, you probably were aware that we had Air Care fly in, not once, but twice. And of course, even though we put out as much as we could on social media, we still got lots of phone calls, you know, what's that helicopter doing in Green Hills? It was even a more moving moment for me particularly and Green Hills in general, that the pilot of Air Care was former Green Hills Police Lieutenant Matt Johnson, who had Ann Ward's job for many, many years here, and is just a stellar guy. He holds a personal place in my heart. You may remember, my youngest daughter had a stroke at age 30. Matt flew her from UC Westchester to UC Downtown, and he told me it was a record seven and a half minute flight. So she immediately went into surgery after that, and the clot was plucked from her brain. I'm convinced he was a part of saving her life. So always good to see Matt. And the training exercise went very well, and we got lots of good pictures. And if you look at our, both Green Hills Fire and Green Hills Facebook and webpages, you'll see a lot of those videos. On a more somber note, we did have a fatality that claimed the life of a Cincinnati resident on Wynton Road, which the manager mentioned a little bit earlier. We'll be working on some traffic enforcement, not only through the police department, but also through traffic engineering to try and cut down on the, the driving that we have there. We had just put up a new pole, and this driver managed to go on the other side of that pole, not the street side of the pole, but the yard side of the pole, missed that one, and then hit the steel pole right at the intersection at Andover and Wynton squarely, which I'm sure resulted in her death and pushed things back, and the car was quite severely damaged. So we continue to be on the lookout for speeders, and we will not allow folks to drive that we can catch that are going to be going at exorbitant rates of speed any time of the day. We had a successful drug takeback today. We had an officer stationed here, and we took back a good number of unwanted prescription drugs. If anyone is listening that says, gosh, I missed that event, our drop box in our lobby is open during business hours from 7:30 in the morning here until 4:00 in the evening. And if you come after hours, a police officer will be glad to help you with that, to make sure that things get loaded in. We welcomed a new code enforcement officer. He was here at our open house. We're looking forward to working with John Yount. And the plus that he brings is he has over 20 years of code enforcement experience, as Jack Lee has said before, on the mean streets of Cincinnati. So I think that he will fit in and be a good addition here. We especially were appreciative of some council kindness in this past month. A couple of council members went above and beyond in explaining their kindness to our department. Maria catered a delicious luncheon plate from Humbert's Meat for our officers just prior to National Police Week. She typically does that annually, and we always appreciate that. And the treats were very well received. And in a police headquarters, you might imagine they just don't last very long. And Councilman Halter, as always, has stepped up to the plate. He's never refused me and does such a wonderful job with his graphic talents and completed a new composite photograph. I just had to ask him for a new one when one member unexpectedly quit, our property technician, and he was kind enough to do it once again. And Jeff, you just don't know how much we appreciate your help. Thank you so much. We have a winning clerk in Vonda Sekoi, who is the luckiest of the lucky. She softly listens to a little background music during the day from different radio stations, and she typically enters their contests for workforce contests. And she once again won the WGRR Workforce Wednesday Contest. So on May 11, we had brunch for the entire staff. We all were able to have some catered breakfast from IHOP, and we all enjoyed pancakes and eggs and bacon and sausage. The list went on. But anyway, we, we're glad she's lucky. And I always try and end with a, a good news note. And Officer Braun was here just a little bit earlier, but he was our Good News of the Month last month, and he reported the following. Received a call on the non-emergency number from a resident in the H section. She stated her alarm system would not stop making noises, and she couldn't get the lockbox open that the alarm system was in. I responded to her residence where she stated that the alarm company could not make it to her house until Friday, and then asked if I could take a look at it. I was able to make entry into the security system panel by removing a screw that was holding the door closed. I then removed the wire. She was advised to move by the alarm company, but the noise did not stop. I walked around her residence and noticed that it was the smoke detector making the noise and informed her that the battery was low. She then provided me with a ladder. I changed the batteries in her smoke detector, which fixed her problem. I want you to be aware, this doesn't happen in many jurisdictions. During, during the past month, we made 17 criminal arrests, including charges for disorderly conduct, operating a vehicle under the influence, menacing having weapons under disability, open container, and failure to appear. We responded to 175 incidents, including 39 squad runs, 17 parking complaints, 13 warrants served, six domestic trouble runs, six trouble runs, six lockouts, and five neighborhood trouble calls. We provided mutual aid to our neighbors in 12 instances. We issued 50 traffic citations, 58 warnings, and investigated six traffic crashes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Comments from the chief?
I was just curious, are those tactical vests adjustable with all this food that's coming in? I was just wondering if that
Velcro, Mr. Lee.
I knew that.
Okay. And did you have something?
I did. Chief made me think of something that I had wanted to comment on, and that's that at the open house, the fire department was out with their trucks and ambulance, and that really, I thought, added a lot, you know, a lot more for people to see and walk around. And I also want to thank the service department because they were all here cleaning the day before and the day after. So
They did a great job.
Big thanks to everybody for, for all that work.
And I'd like to thank the chief and his team for putting this together and making it a success. And a lot of families came.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, because you and the manager were our two official greeters at the front door. We thank you for that.
We have potentially a future police officer in maybe 15 years. He'll be old enough, but he wants, wants to be a police officer, some young man that
I was seriously
I got a hug.
That was so cute.
Wanted a hug from the chief and Mayberry, went over to hug Mayberry. All right, the mayor's court reports for the month of April. We'll be issuing a check to the state of Ohio for $1,680.10, and Hamilton County will receive $61.50, and the Village of Green Hills will receive $7,005.07. That's And that's all I have. Okay, ports of committees, recreation cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We unfortunately could not meet earlier this month due to some scheduling conflicts, so we're going to be getting together to find a new date for that meeting. That's all.
All right. Finance and audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I get into the April highlights, I'd like to defer to debt, to our finance director to give a report on the tax budget.
Oh, the tax budget, sure. Well, I'm working on the tax budget now and as Ms. Kovak mentioned, we will have the tax budget ready by June 10th. It will be presented to our work session on June 14th and then we have our regular council meeting at the end of June. I forget what day it is.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth. And it can go for passage at that time. It is due mid-July to Hamilton County, so that is before our next regular council session. So, that should fall in line just perfectly to get that in on time. So, I'm just preparing the numbers right now. Like I said, it'll probably be another week, seven, eight days before I have it finished.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Counsel in front of you is the recap for the month of April. You can see that the income tax and real estate taxes are very much on line with expectations and in line with year-to-year 2021. Overall, the general fund balance year-to-date, the current balance is $1,604,441.22, which is a 13% increase over the balance at the same time last year. On the expense side, we've been spending money and it sounds like we're going to spend more money coming up soon on pool-related issues. But everything is staying in line with our appropriated balances and there are no transfers from the general fund at this time. And I have two resolutions to go for, read through for passage coming up. That's the end of my report.
And I will make a mention further on the income tax, which we'll see next month. The May income tax came in, you know, very nicely. We had a little over $200,000 of collections, gross collections for May. So, we had $177,000 for the initial May 2nd distribution and then we had another around $24,000 for the reconciliation. So, that's starting to progress a little bit and get back to normal. It's been a little slow, but that was good to see.
All right. Community development, Jeff Holter.
Yes, the main thing I'd like to report is the winners of the unification awards. This I wrestled with because there were not that many nominations. The most attractive properties actually have won in the past and without us laying down some more guidelines, there's no reason why we shouldn't be good to our word and give them a second round. So, 21 Beckford and A5 Julep are going to be recipients again. I think we'll revisit this. I know people are busy, but I think if we set up some guidelines, we can go around. We know there's a lot of deserving properties out there and people invest a lot in their properties, so we might switch from a nomination model to, you know, some criteria and some maybe external judging if we need to do that. So, congratulations to 21 Beckford and A5 Julep. You can't win if you don't play, right? So, it's good for them. The only other thing that is not, in a way, I guess, loosely related to community development is I just want to mention to keep in your prayers and thoughts, the Rob Elementary shooting in Texas. It is just, you know, on one hand, I'm so proud of this country and wouldn't want to be anyplace else on the planet. On the other hand, we just need to value each other a lot more than we do. And that goes for everybody involved. I mean, sometimes there's nothing you can do about that, but the shock and awe and just devastation to little kids and that entire school is just tremendously disheartening. So, continue to support your police and all those that are trying to do the right thing for our communities and keep them in your prayers. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is June 28th at 5:30 prior to the June council meeting. And I wanted to say good things for our police department. I attended both the Coffee with the Cop and the open house and very well attended and I'm proud of our department. Thank you.
Okay, services and streets, Jennifer Ozamal, Nicole Louie.
Thank you. The latest phase of the sidewalk cutting has been completed and they are replacing the sidewalk sections at this point in time.
Correct.
Yeah. And then the, I attended the park talk on Thursday and that, I was so happy that I could finally make it to one. And that is such an opportunity to get a lot of questions that you have about what's going on in the community answered. And I wish that more people were there because a lot of the questions are like, what's going around on social media and stuff like that? And you have the answers right there with pizza. So, yeah, I was, and I learned some things too, that we have 3,000 trees in the village. So...
That's just on the streets.
Yeah. People wonder about, you know, why isn't my tree trimmed immediately? And because there's 3,000 trees. So, you know, I think that in the future for those park talks, I think that was a really great thing and I wish that people would come out in the time because it was very informative and it was, it's a nice casual setting where you're not, you know, necessarily at a council meeting or something like that, but you get a lot of questions answered and it was, I thought it was great. The open house was great as well, so I was happy to be there. And then I just wanted to stress that if you have an issue that needs to be addressed by the services department, please either call the Green Hills office or get on the website, the Green Hills website, click on the streets and services page and use that link because that's where you get results. Thank you.
For the sidewalk cutting, is there still more to be done or...
There's two more phases.
My street's one of them, I think.
It'll get tight. Next year.
They're one street away.
In every direction, I've seen it. When I walk around the block, I see it, just not online. Not a high-traffic area.
Yeah. Okay, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Maria Walther.
Our meeting would be on the 28th of June at 6:00 PM.
All right. This is a time for citizens to comment on legislation listed on the agenda for this session of council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments. Comments will be limited to four minutes. Hearing none. We have no ordinances. Resolution Number 2022-R12-F requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for the purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-R12-F, resolution requesting information from the Hamilton County Auditor for purposes of evaluating and levying a tax exceeding the 10 mil limitation. Whereas the village council has preliminarily determined that the amount of taxes which may be raised within the 10 mil limitation will be insufficient to fund the necessary services provided by the village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. And whereas the primary purpose and intent of such funding is for the current operating expenses for the village as authorized by Section 5705.19A of the Ohio Revised Code. And whereas Ohio Revised Code 5705.03 requires the village council to obtain certain information from the county auditor prior to proceeding with the submission of a tax levy renewal to the electors of the village. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. Section 1, that the village council has preliminarily determined that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation for the benefit of the residents of Green Hills for current operating expenditures for the village as authorized by Ohio Revised Code 5705.19A for the period of five years. Section 2, that the renewal levy shall be submitted to the electors of the village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, at the November general election to be held at the usual places within said village of Green Hills on the 8th day of September 2022. Section 3, that said levy shall be placed upon the tax list for 2022 for collection in 2023 if the majority of the electors voting their in vote in favor thereof. Section 4, that the village council hereby requests the information from the county auditor related to the current total tax valuation of the village and the dollar amount of the revenue that would be generated by the levy of tax at a rate not exceeding 3.89 mils for each $1 of valuation for five years. That is section 5, that the village council seeks the information requested to present the levy on the November 8th, 2022 ballot. Section 6, that the clerk of the village council is hereby directed to immediately certify to the county auditor this resolution and to obtain from the county auditor the information requested hereunder. Section 7, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Been moved in second to adopt this resolution. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just, this always gets confusing that 3.89 mils is not millions of dollars. It's a multiple of the value of your assessed value of your home and property. And as the village manager mentioned before, that it's estimated that this would generate $188,000 annually. And this is a renewal. There is no increase and this one's been on the books for many, many years.
And yeah, I'll make a comment on that too, because of the state's reduction factor, which gets confusing on taxes, because when it was passed years ago, you cannot generate any more than what it generates today unless we have new construction. So, that can play a part in it. So, its actual effective rate, if it were passed as a new millage today, would be 2.8 mils roughly. Okay, clerk call the roll.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Ospina Blue?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Holter?
Aye.
Paul?
Resolution Number 2022-R12-F passes. Next resolution, Number 2022-R13-F, making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2022-13F, resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Whereas the 2022 annual appropriations that were adopted on the December 14th, 2021 are to be amended. And whereas appropriations must not exceed the total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the village of Green Hills, Ohio. Section 1, since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated so to permit the village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2022, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditures for the year 2022. Fund description, general fund, $1,011,040.0008. Appropriation, $2,500 change, $2,500. The total now is $5,000 and this is for the police donation portion of the general fund. Section 2, that the following transfers of fund be made from previously appropriated monies, none. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Second approved. Any comments? Chief, I'm assuming this is money donated by Green Hills residents?
Yes, sir, that's correct. It's all monies that, actually, we haven't solicited, that people just come forward and it speaks to the kindness and generosity of the folks in our community.
And the police have done a good job using that money, helping people. All right, clerk call the roll.
Holter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Ospina Blue?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Resolution Number 2022-R13-F passes. No proclamations. Do we have any comments from council members?
I would love to make a comment. The American Legion is going to have the Memorial Day service at the Commons at 11:00 on Monday and it will be the 30th of May. I also have been contacted by several taxpayers that would like, if at all possible, if we could have one call for this particular event because they kind of forget about it and like you do with a concert, they usually come to the concert because they get that phone call to help them with that. So, being at the Commons and being a community kind of service, I just wonder if I may bring that up to you for consideration.
Oh, absolutely. I think we were going to be doing one Friday.
Okay, and then this is at 11:00 and Monday will be May the 30th.
And we do headline news to...
Right.
Do we need to make a first-time mention about the pool situation?
No.
Just so people...
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? All right, calendar. Well, we have the Memorial Day.
June 28th, our laws and rules at 6:00 PM.
Safety prior to that, 5:30.
Could be announced.
To be announced, yeah.
To be.
Plus, keep on the lookout for the pool opening.
Right.
And information about concerts on the common.
Right. And June 1st will be the first concert and that's Jim Miller Day. So, if anybody sees Jim Miller, say hi to him on his day. And he's been doing this now 23 years, I think, or something like that. So, he's put together a good number of bands. I think there are nine concerts this year and Jim's done a fantastic job in lining up the bands and begging and borrowing money from people to pay for them. And if anybody wants to get married, I marry people and use the fees, I'll pay for the bands. All right, it's an opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to... This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for the ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers.
I'm here tonight again to ask Green Hills council members to pass a small cell wireless ordinance that would provide the maximum power available to our village to regulate the placement of wireless facilities in order to prevent the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities and the adverse impacts it could have on our community. As I've told you at past meetings, other local councils have already passed ordinances, including Amberly Village, Anderson Township, Cincinnati, Deer Park, Marymont, Mason, and Springdale. There are likely others. At the last meeting, council member Jack Lee voiced his opposition to an ordinance despite the fact that our village has the right to have one. He said, quote, "My point has been that 5G is already here. It's present, it's on some of our phones. Is this ordinance really needed at all? Further, existing utility infrastructure, which is normally used for these installations, is already there." End quote. Existing utility infrastructure that is often used for these installations is wooden utility poles, sometimes referred to as telephone poles. These poles are already being used in other local communities to attach 4G and 5G small cell antennas, sometimes in front of homes. I don't know if these municipalities have ordinance that require proof of a wireless service gap before they permitted the installation. If they had required proof, some of these antennas may not have been installed. That's why it's important to have a protective ordinance. I'm not the only resident who doesn't want 4G or 5G small cell antennas installed in my home. I took a petition in 2018 that proves that. Other Ohio municipalities have already passed regulatory ordinances because they have the right to do so. They don't seem afraid of the, quote, "unintended consequences" that Jack Lee referenced last month. If there is no service gap that's been identified in a Green Hills neighborhood, the village needn't feel obligated to grant a permit to install wireless infrastructure there, whether it's 5G or 4G. That's why council should pass protective ordinance. Last month, Jack took issue with my quoting attorney, Andrew Campanelli, about the importance of having an ordinance, so tonight I'm going to read from the sample municipal code for small cell infrastructure posted on the Americans for Responsible Technology website. Since you'll likely cut me off at four minutes, I'll only have time to read some of the requirements listed in the application content, Section 3.2. Quote, "All permit applications must include (C) certification at the proposed small cell installation addresses and existing and significant gap in coverage in the service area. Such certification to include a detailed map of the, quote, 'gap areas' and documentation of such gaps causing an inability for a user to connect with the land-based national telephone network or maintain a connection capable of supporting a reasonably uninterrupted communication. F, certification by an independent certified radio frequency engineer that the small cell installation will be in compliance with all FCC standards for RF emissions as they relate to the general public, including aggregate emissions for all collated, co-located equipment. H, documentation demonstrating significant effort to locate the small cell installation in non-residential areas, including an explanation of why non-residential locations are unsuitable. I, documentation that owners of all properties within 500 feet of the proposed small cell installation have been notified in writing via certified mail of the proposed installation, including its exact location, and that a blaze orange sign measuring at least nine inches by 12 inches has been conspicuously placed at the proposed location of each small cell installation. K, an executed indemnification agreement as set forth in Section 3.6 hereof, and documentation that applicant and any third party on whose behalf the small cell facility is being considered..." May I finish just that point?
No.
Thank you.
The last time you were finishing one sentence, and it went on for two minutes.
I showed you. No, come on. I showed you.
Sit down. Okay. Sit down.
That's not fair. I showed you. It's recorded.
I know you guys like the longer ones, but I just wanted to present some short comments on the small cell ordinance that was not passed at the last council meeting. It was my understanding that there was a consensus among council members as far back as the council retreat to get something on the books right away to protect residents from intrusion from the installation of the small cell antennas in the village. The ordinance submitted by Jeff Holter was actually a copy of an existing Amberly Village ordinance. The Green Hills version was modified to eliminate many of the provisions that provided engineering oversight, but for the most part, it was meant to cover restrictions on the use of public right-of-way locations for aesthetic purposes. Now, aside from the no votes, there was nothing presented during the council discussion that included any specific parts of the ordinance which could become a legal enforcement issue. Instead, residents heard from Mr. Jack Lee's comments, the same old past reasons to dismiss any future action needed to enforce small cell facility restrictions solely based on the fear from action from the FCC or the telecoms. He then added energy utilities lawsuit as well to the mix. This new fear presents as a weak argument against the creation of any insulation guidelines. His long quote from a dossier about ambiguous language in an ordinance that could allow municipalities to impose new requirements upon utility companies is really just conjecture on his part, in my opinion. The Amberly Village ordinance was chosen as a template for Green Hills because it had a close mix to the same residential and business zoning guidelines needed in the village. I spoke with the Amberly Village zoning administrator after he responded to my public record request covering the, any existing small cell ordinance that they had in place, and he submitted that there was no specific fears forthcoming from his council about any possible telecom lawsuits. There are at least six other local municipalities with similar ordinance in place, including Springdale, Deer Park, Marymont, Anderson Township. All these ordinances, aside from the public right-of-way guidelines, have included sections which require conditional use permits for residential small cell installations. The permits mandate prior notice and a public hearing before it can be approved by the zoning board. If further study is needed, as was suggested at the last council on the legislation before its passage, I would suggest that the ordinance be assigned to the Laws and Rules Committee for further review. The committee can use any of the existing local ordinance in place for the last couple of years as references to establish acceptable village guidelines. Thank you.
Okay. We have no executive session. Meeting adjourned.